Okay, so it is one o'clock, so I will open the discussion, but I did have something that I'd like to read into the record regarding this meeting. Today, December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, this is a meeting of the City Council Maintenance and Development Committee. Members of the committee are myself as Chair, Council Letterman, and Council Fenton. The meeting today is to hear details of the pedestrian traffic study from Mass DOT. The focus is to make our streets safer, and particularly in light of the recent fatalities, we are going to just, we're concentrating on State Street. We're hoping that there'll be new solutions in the DOT study. Our meeting today is open to the public, and on this meeting, I see Betsy Johnson and Linda O'Connell, who have been very involved in getting something to happen on State Street, not just recently, but over the past couple of years. In addition, President Wilson, President Williams, a former Chair of Maintenance and Development, took this issue very seriously when he was chairing Maintenance and Development and passed that concern on to us. Council Hurst has also been on top of this issue. And I want to say that residents have been asking for quite a while for solutions to this particular problem. We know that there are traffic safety issues all over the city, but as I said, we are going to concentrate today mostly on State Street, but we are not going to ignore other parts of the city where there have been accidents and fatalities. And I continue to get feedback about accidents that continue to occur at the intersection of Sumner and Long Hill Street. And I know that there was, not a sting, but there was a tension this weekend to those issues. So we're going to move forward now on the State Street issue, but we will not be ignoring other parts of the city. So Council Letterman, before I turn this over to DPW Director Chris Signoli, do you have any comments you'd like to make? Because you really have been a champion of this issue.
Oh, thank you very much, Council Walsh, Chairwoman Walsh. And I just want to thank you and all of the members of the City Council who have stayed on top of this along with myself. And I especially think, though, I also want to thank the members of the public that are here, including, I know, I see some folks from the library, our director, some library employees, as well as folks from Armory Quadrangle Civic Association and Walkbike Springfield. I mean, the announcement that came last week is really in line with what those groups have been imploring the administration to consider for a number of years now with the support of the City Council. And so I think that we have made some, some very good progress with regard to this crossing. But I think we also know that we need to, you know, as you said, Chairwoman, be looking at our design across the city and utilizing similar principles to what is being proposed now at this particular crossing in other areas. And certainly, I think it can't, can't go without saying that for, you know, several families, things will, this will never be the same, right? We know that we've seen real tragedies as a result of some of these areas. And the fact that we're going to be making improvements now is very important, but I want to, I want to recognize those families too. So looking forward to hearing the presentation today and also looking forward to hearing, again, at this site, the feedback from the public and what they think about the proposal. But I think that though we are talking today about State Street, the feedback that we get and the steps that get taken there, again, will result in a better application in the future at other locations. So I think it's sort of one in the same in terms of the process that's taking place now. It's a model for what can take place later. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Council Gomez, did you have anything you'd like to add or any interested, you're interested in hearing on this subject?
Not really, Madam Chair, just want to join with you guys and hear what needs to be said. Probably afterwards, I might have a question or two. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't believe there are any other members of the council on the call. We have been joined by Virginia from the Springfield Library. And again, we sympathize with you and your loss, and hopefully the plans that come forward will prevent any further tragedy. So without...
Madam Chair, for me, Council Davila's person.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Here also, I see, I see Council Hurst, too.
All right, so Council Davila, what are your concerns?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair. Thank you for putting this meeting together, and thank you for advocating, you, Council Walsh, and all who have located on this issue for years now. As we all know, we have a serious problem throughout the city with speeding, a problem which could potentially only get worse during the holiday season. And so we look forward to the presentation to see how we can enhance our safety here in the city for pedestrians and all alike. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And Council Hurst?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have nothing to add, other than I look forward to hearing the proposal, as well as the response from the community. Thank you.
Yeah, and I do want to say that Council Letterman and I talked about this, this issue, and we felt very strongly that the meeting should include the people who have been working on, on this issue, so we can get their feedback. And I hope there'll be plans for a larger presentation to the public. So, Chris, thank you for, Signoli, Director of DPW, thanks for joining us today.
Thank you.
Let me, let me just ask you, because, because you know that people, the council and citizens have been, been concerned about this issue on State Street. Does this plan that they've put forward do everything we hope it's going to do, or...
Best thing I can say is I hope so.
Okay.
And when I go, as I go through the presentation, there are a few things that I have some concerns about, and, excuse me, and we will go through them, but I hope so.
Before, before you get started, this plan has been presented to the city. Do, does the City Council have any input into it, or is this a done deal?
From an approval standpoint, the council doesn't have an involvement in it. If we need to do presentations, whether it's in this format or another, to present to the council, I'm happy to do it.
Okay.
Technically, once we, once we do it, or once we end up initiating whatever as we do in the field, there, there's technically no council involvement. We don't need any easements, we don't need any takings. We're not, there may be something if we end up having to change rules of the road in the particular area that would have to be done. So just a couple of things that I wanted to start off with. This study that was done is, at this time, the DOT is not involved. They have been notified, we've talked to them about it. And once we turn it into a project, we're going to make a determination whether or not we go to them for anything, but we will have to go to them for modification of, of rules of the, or excuse me, traffic control agreement for State Street, most likely, but that doesn't seem to be a big deal at this point. That's the only conversation that I've had with Mass DOT on it. The second thing is kind of an overall type of thing. In, over the past couple of weeks, I've been doing a lot of observing of our traffic cameras throughout the downtown area and other areas of the city. We have traffic cameras. And unfortunately, following the pedestrian accident that happened last week, we've been, I've been doing a lot of looking at cameras. Street crossings, less than thirty percent of the people who cross a street use the Ped button, whether one is there or it's not, or especially if it's there, thirty percent only use the button. The rest of the people just go across the street. So when we are looking at instituting different things like this, there's still going to be a huge amount of the population that doesn't honor the rules that we have in the city. It happens throughout downtown all the time. And we, I've been really looking at a lot of the cameras, and I've kind of been a little aghast at the amount of people that cross the street without using the Ped phases that we have. So just given that, that's something that's kind of popped up to me in the past, past week or so, and looking at some of the issues that we've had. And I just wanted to go through, quickly through the presentation that we did the other day. In a number of meetings that we've had over the years, you know, everybody knows that back in the seventies and to the late eighties anyways, there was a crossing at the library at the front door that went across State Street. At a number of the meetings that I've been to over the years, people have said to me that it's, it's been there a lot longer, it's been there a lot longer, it was taken out when State Street was done over. The aerial, and the leftover here is from nineteen ninety-five. There's no crossing, no pedestrian crossing at that time. And this Google Street View is from two thousand and seven. And as you can see, there's somebody right there trying to cross the road, but there was no defined crosswalk there. We designed, redesigned State Street in the mid-two thousands. Construction basically finished in early two thousand and ten. Full upgrades of all the pedestrian crossings, and particularly, excuse me, Chestnut and Maple was installed. And obviously, we put in deterrence for people to cross State Street in front of the library. We've done a number of traffic studies there. The most recent that has the best numbers is the traffic study that was done as part of the casino, road safety audits that were completed for that. And so we looked at all sorts of data from that, as well as taking data from new when we did that work. Just to give everybody an idea, stairs were installed. What it is now is a hundred and fifty-foot walk to the crosswalk, across the crosswalk, two hundred and forty feet to a spot right about here in front of the library. One of the things we talk about all the time is stop cues. This aerial photo happens to show how far back cars kind of sit in a red light. They sit back here. So crossings here, or anywhere in this area, talk about people having to cross through stopped cars. And I'll talk a little bit about that in a second. What have we done? This study started in June of this year. We selected a traffic consultant off of our on-call. We obtained Mastot approval, to use our Chapter Ninety money. So that was the first involvement that they had. Reviewed all the recent studies we had. As part of the casino, bike lanes were put in, modifications to timing along the entire State Street corridor was done. In November, pedestrian counts were taken. And right now, we see that during peak times in the morning, there were six people crossing the street between seven-thirty and eight-thirty. And when I say cross the street, crossing, I'm going to use the word illegally just to use it in context of what we're talking about. Basically, crossing the street where there is not a crosswalk. So obviously, there's a lot of people doing that. We, as part of this study, we made a determination where a crosswalk can be made. And the remaining analysis that's being done, I'll get into it in some detail, is kind of working out the engineering details of exactly what we want to do. The proposal right now is for narrowing the pavement, installing a, most likely a Hawk system. I have down RRFB, but it'll most likely be a Hawk system.
I don't know if anybody knows what a Hawk system is.
And I'll, I'll talk about that in one second. And just for photo purposes, in front of, for those of you who can see it, over here, on Plainfield Street by McDonald's, this is what an RRFB is. You come up, you hit the beak, the button, these lights flash, and you cross the street. The one above it is the Hawk system that is in place on State Street, up by the Indian Motorcycle Building. It's the same sort of location, you hit the button. However, overhead, you will get a flashing yellow light and then a red light. So basically, that forces traffic to stop. This one highlights traffic to stop, but doesn't promote a red. This type of thing, we have a couple of them around the city, and probably the one that's most recognizable is up by Western New England College, that is up there. So those are the type of things that we are talking about. If I can just get this moved back, so I can see a little bit here. What are, I just want to go backwards a little second. The ultimate solution that we are talking about, we have to do designing, we got to make sure about merging site distance ADA, compliance, et cetera, when we do this. What our plan is, is that the actual final that comes up by the engineers is that in the spring, I want to install cones, barrels, barricades out there to mimic what is going to happen. And the reason why I want to do that is that my one big fear on all this is the amount of traffic disruption that is going to happen. And my preference is to make sure that if we have traffic disruption, excuse me, that we're doing it with cones, barrels, barricades, not with people crossing the street. On, on State Street, we're going to get into merging and things like that, which I'll talk about in one second. The plan at this point is that the location that is shown here is where the crossing will be placed, within a few feet in each direction. The driveway that is here, that goes on the side of the museum, or side of the library, excuse me, in the driveway entrance, we have to get that as far enough away as we are doing something raised. We can't have somebody coming out into a raised situation there. So we have it in a spot. So the walk now will be seventy-five feet this way up, a hundred and seventy-five feet that gets you to the front step there. So it is still a walk. And the other, the reason why I mentioned about the buttons is that this crossing, where people kind of cross now, people will still do that. And that is a big fear of mine, that people will see that this will be possibly easier to do in the future, even though they don't use the crosswalk. So that's one of the fears that I have that may happen. And what is shown here, I can get out of the way a little bit for myself, at a point up at Elliott Street, and coming to a point around here, is where all the pavement narrowing is going to take place. Outside of this, we have bus stops. Outside of this here, we have bus stops, we have bus stops just up from School Street, just below School Street. And then we also have in front of St. Michael's Cathedral for weddings, funerals, et cetera. So the widening, or excuse me, the narrowing will happen in that area right there. The, this is not a great thing to look at. This is the plan that the engineer put together, one of two, the other ones they're working on now. When we are looking at pavement narrowing, we have two options. We can narrow the center and keep the outside curbs where they are, or we can bring the outside curbs in and narrow it that way. This type of configuration shows a narrowing in the center. So if you were to push a button on the south side of the street, you would cross the street to, and then be in a center island. You would then have to hit the button again to go across. The reason why it would be like this is, excuse me, losing my voice a little, is that crossing this whole thing would probably cause a longer stop, probably thirty seconds, which would then mean traffic would be backing up. So we're looking at timings, et cetera. If we narrow it from the outside, you then are able to cross the whole street at once. However, we need to make sure that that is as safe as well. And when we narrow it from the inside, we then have much more work to do. We have drainage issues, some site distance issues. So we're, we're looking at, the engineers looking at both options right now, just to kind of figure out which one is, I don't want to say which one is best, they're both good, but which one seems to be the one that will work the best. As I mentioned, they're both elevated, so we're doing an elevated crosswalk. So there will be a point here where you will elevate up and then down, same this way, up, down. So therefore, from a speed standpoint, basically, anything over thirty miles an hour is going to be next to a possible driving over it. And what I expect is that the crossing will most likely be at a minimum six, most likely eight feet wide. It will not be a hump, it will be a flat crosswalk. For those of you, we talked about before, like, excuse me, crossings in Long Meadow and places like that, those have kind of turned into humps. And that's just kind of in the way that it's been engineered. This would be engineered a little differently, so it would be nice and flat. So when you drive up it, you'd be flat on it, and then go down. So there would be, you know, somebody trying to drive fifty miles an hour over it. It's not going to work out very well for them. And probably anything over thirty miles an hour is not going to work. So this will, and I use the word artificially, bring the speeds down in that corridor. However, what, what tends to happen is when people get past it, they automatically speed up, they automatically speed up. But we will be controlling speeds in this area here. So what our plan is, as I mentioned, is the designer is now laying out some engineering plans like this for us to look at the next week or so, to figure out whether or not we want to do the widening from the inside and the outside. And as I said, this gets into traffic timings, impacts on timing at previous intersections. Excuse me, do we need to do an interconnect? And if we do interconnect, what does that mean for speed and timings and things like that getting through? Because as I said, what I don't want to have happen is somebody coming over this and trying to speed to make sure that they get through this intersection. So we want to make sure that the timing of this intersection, the timing at the one at Dwight Street, this location, and the one at School Street are all, not necessarily integrated together as far as being a common intersection, but integrated together that they're not going to have a major impact on each other. So in a general terms, that's what we're proposing at this point. The actual detail of whether we do a mid, mid widening from the middle or from the outside is something that our engineers are looking at right now. It would then have to be designed. And as we discussed at our meeting last week, it would most likely be something that we would be starting construction on, probably, basically, when school gets done, beginning middle of June of two thousand and twenty-two, would be the actual start of full construction. So that is it. I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Okay, so you have to remove the screen share, I think, so I can see who's got their hand raised.
I can get rid of it if you want, catering.
Yeah, I'd like to be able to see who has a question. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, Elizabeth, I see your, your hand up, if you'd like to ask a question.
Hi, thank you very much, councilors and Director Signoli, for your presentation. I have to admit, although I was super excited to get the press release last week, I was less excited when I saw some of the walking back in quotes in the newspaper. In two thousand and fourteen, the mayor asked the DPW to take a look at the crosswalk at State Street after the tragic death then. In two thousand and nineteen, Director Signoli and the DPW wrote a seven-page memo about why he opposed a crossing in this area. And now what I hear is comments like illegal crossings and people who aren't going to obey the light anyway. And shockingly, this quote from the presentation we just heard, his one big fear, your one big fear is traffic disruption. As a person who is an expert in design and engineering, I'm sure you understand the concept of desire paths. For those of you who don't, an example would be if you're trying to figure out where to lay out crosswalks, you plant grass everywhere and see where the footpaths are, and then pave, right, based on what humans do. I'm deeply concerned that the priority here are the two thousand ton, two thousand pound humps of metal. I, I'm not a biker or a walker, I'll be honest, I don't own a bike, I'm not anti-car. What I am is concerned about a department that seems to be by far the most concerned about the cars, and not at all concerned about the continuing tragic deaths. So my question really is, after I've pontificated for that minute or two, how committed are you really, Director Signoli, to finding a solution when historically you have been adamant that a crossing there won't do anything except disrupt cars?
To let you know, historically, all of the previous requests that we've been directed to look at were to reinstall the crosswalk at the center of the library. That was what we were charged with all of the time that we looked at. So this of moving it, and one of the, one of the reasons why we did the analysis that we did is there is still a walking path that will be required to get to the library, or vice versa, to go across the street. So we want to make sure everybody is aware of that. So the crossing, and what has been asked of me by a number of people is, oh, good, or I shouldn't say asked, but has been said to me is, oh, good, you're reinstalling the crosswalk at the library. And I've had to say, no, it is not at the library per se. It is up the street. And as I said before, all of the asks that we have been asked to deal with in the past have always talked about at the library. So that's what we looked at. And my fear, as I said, is that when we start talking about cars, when vehicles start to speed up, especially when we are merging, and cars are trying to jockey for position, is when vehicles, people driving vehicles pay less attention to what is around them versus just trying to go straight faster. So when we have merge lanes, when we have drop-off lanes, et cetera, is when people start to drive erratically. And my concern is that when people drive erratically, is that that's when, that's when things happen, because people aren't paying attention, other than to just go fast to get from point A to point B. And on a, on a road such as State Street with twenty-five or thirty thousand vehicles, what we're trying to do is control them as best as possible. However, I also know in the city of Springfield, some people just do not obey traffic rules and traffic regulations. And those are the ones that concern me when we get along this corridor. I have it right now up in front of the new school, and in front of Commerce, where people park wherever they want to, get out of their car where they want to, park it wherever they want to, and all of a sudden, there's going to be an issue, and somebody's going to say, fix it. And it's when people are doing things that they shouldn't be doing, makes me concerned. And when we put together roadway plans, crossing plans, we want and hope people to follow the rules of the road. And it's when they don't, is when things happen. And when we started looking at all of the accidents that occurred in the city, and we start seeing things like a hundred and fourteen miles an hour, eighty-five miles an hour, those are the type of people driving on these streets that cause the problems. And that's the big concern that I talk about, or that I mean to talk about on a place like State Street in this area, when people try to run and beat lights. And that's what I don't want to have happen along this corridor.
Okay, Council Letterman, I see your hand is up.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. And I'm not going to go too deeply into this, because I really hope that the meeting today will, will set an example for a process that we can follow in the future for many locations. And so I think that the, the fact that we're discussing this crossing is very important, especially after the history that the debate has. But I am going to clarify one thing, which is that my request in two thousand and nineteen with Counselor Williams, who was then Chair of Maintenance and Development, and Counselor Gomez, who was then, Counselor Adam Gomez, who was then the Ward One Counselor, is now the state senator, was to establish a crossing somewhere between the library and the parking lot for use of individuals who would be parking in that parking lot. Did not specify particular location. It may have cited that there previously was a crosswalk, but it was not about a particular location. And actually, in response to the, the memo that came out so forcefully opposing that crossing, I actually wrote a response discussing the possibility of a crossing exactly where the current crossing is now proposed. So, so I just want to be clear about that. With that said, the question that I have is, the driveway that is next to the library in between St. Michael's Cathedral and the library, what does that go to? What, what is it used for? Do we know?
The, the people in the library can probably answer that better than I can, but I do know there is a handful of cars that park back there, but it is also used for deliveries.
Handicap parking, it's where the handicap parking is.
But, but I do know...
And it is, it's delivery and service access mostly for the museums.
I can speak to that as well. The only delivery area for the library...
I just tell people who you are.
I'm Molly Fogarty, Director, Library Director. The only delivery spot for the library is using that, you know, that path. wrote, you know, that path going in, um, all our, we get daily deliveries of books and things like that. And it's also used by the museums for their deliveries. Um, and, um, there is, it's access to ADA parking uh, that's between George Walter and the Science Museum. That's the only way to get to the ADA parking. There are about six or seven spots there. So that, that is used a lot. And we get daily deliveries, UPS deliveries, any furniture, anything that comes to the library gets, uh, we have a lift, um, on the side of the building and, um, that's the only way to get things into the library. It's not certainly safe to park on State Street and do deliveries, so.
That makes sense. That makes sense because, um, the, the, the goal, I think, should be to get the current crossing as close to the, the area where people are crossing, uh, you know, kind of clearly as possible. And so I'm just, I'm thinking maybe if we, uh, took a look at the use of that driveway, um, because even that i- i- in considering, uh, Chris's concerns with the traffic queues, um, is still outside of that queuing area. So I think the closest we can get to that area as possible, the better. And if there's some way to interact with that driveway, uh, in such a way that allows it to move closer, you know, we should, we should consider that, but we'll leave that, uh, you know, to the engineers to look at and, and maybe in consort with, uh, with you, Director Fogarty, about if there's any alternative to, uh, that entry point. So that, that was the thing that stuck out to me, uh, the most.
Certainly, uh, with the museums as well, um, because that's their entry and, and it does, it's the only way to get to the ADA parking um, for, um, museum and library patrons.
Thank you. Um, Betsy Johnson, uh, you have your hand up. And I know you've been on this issue for quite a while.
Um, I would, I'm, my initial concern, well, two comments. One, your first comment about only thirty percent of the people actually using the pedestrian signals and passing. I would contend that that means this, the pedestrian phasing is way off. And we really need to relook at more, evaluate more concurrent phasing for pedestrians. I happen to know at the, um, if you are at the, for example, um, you are, at the other intersection by Dwight, where all of the trap, where all of the cars are parked, are stopped on Dwight Street, you don't, the pedestrian doesn't even get the signal to cross, even though no cars can go through. And I do know from, at the intersection we're talking about at Maple Chestnut, it's a very, very long wait. And so I think there needs to be at all of these cycles, uh, relooking at whether, um, full stoppage for pedestrians versus concurrent, uh, letting, uh, pedestrians go with, you know, a signage that says pedestrians will be crossing, don't turn. Um, that is the preferred, anyway, that's, I don't think we just accept that just there, there is a reason why thirty percent use it. There's something that needs to be relooked at. Uh, my second concern with this is I'm a little disappointed that we're really looking at this narrowing only from Elliott, basically to the library. Cars will not re-speed up if you don't immediately after the crossing, have it be two-way, two lanes again. Let's have more of this whole area be, you're going to have a hundred new residents living at three-ten State Street and ninety-five State Street within the next two and three years. So you, it's going to be a very, very dense residential area, not to mention the nine hundred families who already live at Skyview, um, or the nine hundred residents, it's not quite families, um. So I think we, I, I'd like a little bit more looking at is, you know, do we narrow and bring the speed down? You know, um, only in this very short area.
Thank you, Betsy. And, uh, Jesse, I don't know if your, your hand is still up. Okay, then I will move on to, uh, Linda, Linda O'Connell, I saw your hand up. Are you still with us?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. My comments largely mirror what Betsy has just said. But we really are, my observation around this, particularly, um, Chris, is that I hear you when you talk about the public pedestrian compliance with the rules and regulations and safety precautions of crossing the streets. I hear you a little bit less when, I, I do hear you when you talk about vehicle compliance with the rules of the road and what their tendencies might be. What I, what I don't hear, as Betsy was pointing out, is why pedestrians might do something other than what we want them to do. Um, the concern about that. Why don't they? I totally agree with Betsy. Having crossed State Street three and four times at various crosswalks over the weekend, the, even understanding whether the light, whether the button for crossing is working is a question. And so many pedestrians, as soon as you step out, you own almost as soon, because the streets are wide, as you step out, you get the flash. So I do wonder, I think overall, whether in these few blocks that are really the metro center heart of the city, we are continuing to give the impression that vehicles are king. And that it's okay for people to speed up. Of course, they will just follow their nature, but that the humans crossing may not just follow their nature. How do we really slow everything down and make this a walkable city? We're not talking about the, in, at this point, as talking about State Street, this is a very small area that is the heart of our city. I don't see why we should have an expectation that it's ever going to be okay for people to speed through at more than thirty miles an hour. And I'm wondering if people coming through the city should be allowed to have that expectation. It should probably be even slower. If we're talking about the library, we're talking about only two blocks to Main Street. That's the heart of the city. It needs to be considered differently, I think, than as a traffic thoroughfare. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda, and thank you for your persistence in this issue. Um, Victor, Council Dabila, you have your hand up?
Uh, yes, Madam, Madam Chair, um, uh, Chris, thank you for your presentation. Uh, some quick, uh, points, Chris. Uh, with regards to specifically on State Street, which is what the meat of this meeting is about. Uh, you know, you talked about people doing what they're not supposed to. And, and yes, absolutely, there is a human element that behaves, both from the pedestrians and from the, uh, drivers themselves. Um, the drivers are, some people just couldn't care less and they're going to speak seventy miles down State Street. All the people are tech or driving, uh, all the people walking, they just walk in front of you, they couldn't care less. So I know that in all the parts of the U.S. and actually throughout the world, um, they put on the ground signs, some of them even flat. Uh, look up, do not cross, uh, press the button. Uh, is that something that, uh, could be looked into, uh, this particular site and throughout the city as a way to help the, the walkers realize that they have to be mindful before they cross?
Chris? Yeah, Mr. Absolutely. And I was just, when I was really just trying to do, I don't know if I can, uh, I probably won't be able to do it real quick. Um, and I just wanted to see if I could hold on one second. Uh, lucky here. At, and I'm just trying to see. Okay, uh, I just wanted to share something real quick. This just happens to be down at the corner of State and Main Street, uh, across the street from the casino. I just wanted to find this. At every location now that we're installing crosswalks and buttons, there are signs talking about the, the location. We don't have anything on the ground. There's nothing on the ground, but at each location, when you go to hit the button, it talks about what you expect, uh, lighting, uh, the, the white light, the countdown light, don't cross, that sort of thing. That is on, uh, every, uh, and I'm just kind of spinning around the intersection here. You can see one here. So on virtually every one of the new signals that are being installed around the city, those types of, uh, notification signs go in at the crosswalk.
I, I understand that, and I think that's very helpful, Chris. However, I have learned much of, for life, that uh, there's the world like, I would like to see it, then there's the real world. And the truth is, as we all know, that people don't do what they do. Uh, I will strongly encourage you, I think it will benefit us to look at placing something on the ground itself. Um, both, where you slow down on the actual street for the cars and on the sidewalk with people saying, uh, look up or some sort of a safety message, press the button. So like I say, all the parts of the country and the world, uh, like for example, Cali, Columbia, they have in the ground flashing lights. Uh, it's unbelievable because people are consuming their cell phones, they look down, they're not even going to look up. I have this problem here in Delmon Avenue. People just walk into traffic, don't even look, and it's, it's a real issue. Uh, so that's, I'm trying to think, I saw the box here, uh, Chris. Now also, Chris, do you, do we have some sort of a listing as to what are the, the top, uh, uh, the top, uh, ten or, or the top most dangerous intersections in this city?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
There's a report that's done, there's a report that's done every, every few years through the state and through the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission that, uh, lists all of the locations throughout the state in the region with regard to accident locations. And then I get a follow-up from Mass DOT. And if, for example, the number one in the city is, is probably still, uh, Parker Street and Boston Road. Uh, and not that that's a, you know, a horrible intersection, it's been redone. It's just, and when you get into the higher volumes of traffic, you're going to get into more accidents.
Got you, got you.
Have that listing.
I understand. And so, uh, Chris, I, I'm, Madam Chair, I made just quickly my last two points. Uh, Chris, I know we talked about Long Hill and Summer Avenue and I'm looking forward to see what comes out of that, as we're having some serious issues on that corner there. On top of that, you add Bryant Heights in the middle of the, of the Mets. Uh, but Chris, uh, my last point, you did mention that Mass DOT was not involved in this study. Uh, who did this study?
Uh, Fosse O'Neill, one of our, one of our design engineers.
Design engineers. Okay. All right. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Allen, who's joined us on this call. I see that your hand is raised. Thanks for joining us.
Yeah, uh, thanks, uh, Chairperson Walsh. Uh, yeah, I didn't get on till about twenty minutes in, so I didn't hear Chris's, um, presentation, but, so pardon me if it's repetitive, but Chris, um, just a quick question on the narrowing of State Street um, at Elliott Street or wherever it happens. Well, that, that, that means it'll be, what's a two-lane road coming to that point will be one lane from then on?
Correct.
And.
Through the throat of the narrowing and through the throat of where the crosswalk is, and then there's a gradual widening in each direction afterwards.
Like down by the Mass Mutual Center kind of thing?
Actually, no, before you get to the, before you get to the end of the library, because we have bus stops turning lanes, uh, especially when you get to Chestnut, and then especially when you get to Dwight, uh, there's a significant amount of right-turn lanes onto right-turn traffic onto Chestnut and a significant amount of left-turn lane on, or left-turning movements onto what I'll call Maple at that location there. So we got to widen out to make sure that, uh, at that point, that definitely needs to be two lanes based on the volume, volume of traffic.
So the two, the, the one lane, the narrowing and having State Street be one lane is for a few hundred yards?
Basically, yes.
Okay. And have you looked at the, I assume you have, looked at the impact of that on congestion farther up kind of thing?
That's, that's what the, that's what the, now that we've told the consultant what we wanted to, they're going to be coming back and, and giving us not just the design information, but also what we can expect. The other thing, uh, as I mentioned before, Counselor, is that we're going to be installing uh, cones, barrels, barricades out there in the spring to mimic what the, uh, uh, condition will be so that we can see actually before it's constructed, what's going to happen with traffic. So if we start to see massive backups or, you know, things like that, we'll have to obviously tweak the design and, and make sure that we can get it because I, I want to make sure, I don't want to spend all this money building something and find out it really doesn't work. So I want to make sure, uh, what we do is really going to work.
I say that sounds like a, a congestion traffic kind of question, but it's also, if there is more backup, there could be, uh, more danger for pedestrians up above.
And, and that's, that's kind of a problem that I want to make sure it doesn't happen because now when you get into, and we have it right now at Dwight and Chestnut, those two intersections, where sometimes traffic does back up to those intersections, people do get the, push the button and are crossing the street in traffic at Chestnut. And people are still sitting in the intersection. So that's what we need to make sure it doesn't happen.
Okay, great, great. Thank you. Thank you, Catering.
Uh, thank you, uh, Council Allen. Uh, Council Letterman, your hand is still up?
Oh, I just had another quick technical question, uh, Council Walsh. Uh, for Chris, although I see he, uh, he's getting something now, so maybe he might be getting something affiliated.
Getting water.
There you are, okay.
Well, well, he's doing that. Uh, can I ask for, um, a show of hands from the people who've been on this issue for a while? Um, whether or not, uh, Betsy, uh, Molly, you haven't joined us before, but I know you're interested, Linda, Virginia, Betsy, uh, myself, do, do you think that this study, and I thought it was messed up, that's been put forward, really hits the nail on the head for what we were all looking at, looking for, for the safety going to the library? I mean, if you, well, I'm not going to, well, that's my concern. I won't ask you to raise your hand, but from what I've heard, I mean, I was hoping you were going to address the people who go to that parking lot next to Classical and then cross the street to the library. There, there's going to be nothing there with this plan, or am I incorrect?
Say that again, Catering. I want to make sure I understood you.
No, no.
What people do and have been doing.
They cross between the two driveways.
They park in the lot. Okay. Of, of, right next to Classical, I believe it's the library lot. Okay. And then they cross heading towards the front door of the library.
Basically, they go between the two driveways is where the most crossing occurs.
Well, I have, yeah, that true, but I have seen people just, it doesn't seem to me this plan addresses people who, who are going to cross there. Is what you're talking about is further up?
Correct. And the reason why it's farther up is that the volume of traffic that is on State Street backs up so far that in order to find the location where there will not be stop traffic, that's as far up State Street as closest to Chestnut as you can go without being in stop traffic. So if you were to cross the street, you're not going to be in stop traffic. And what we could do, and this is where it gets into the timings, is that, okay, if you hit this button, say we moved it down. Now you got to integrate the timing and then you got both directions to deal with. So now we are making sure that where this is located is outside of a stop traffic queue so that there's not traffic, just stop there and people are trying to cross in between it. So that's the whole reason why it's up as far as it is.
Well, I was hoping for something a little different and, uh, and you're not doing this until spring, uh, until next spring. So there'll be nothing physically done on State Street until spring?
Yes. As soon as we can in the spring, as soon as the weather breaks, because I don't want to put that material out there during winter.
Well, me neither, but I also don't want anybody else to get hit. So. Okay, I can't, uh, Tim, I, will you finish your? Tim, I, will you finish your, your hand is still up?
I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm all set for now.
Okay, I can't see if anybody else, uh, I don't know if any of the other counselors are still. Uh, Consular Gomez, did you have any comments?
Now, most of them have been answered. My biggest concern is the pedestrians uh being unruly and undisciplined, not obeying the, the laws. And as fast as that traffic comes down that uh, that street, we need to slow it down. Uh, because uh, we have traveled there and car just doing fifty, sixty miles down that, that, that State Street. Uh, but pedestrians continue to be a problem for me, because they, especially the young uh, the young generation, disciplined, that they believe that they got license plates on their bodies. And they're entitled to cross whenever they wanna cross and, you know, or at the drive. Uh, we have been many times uh caught up in this situation where we'll almost run somebody because they right in front of us, we don't get to see them. So eh eh as a situation and, and, and also the, the, the concern of, of this still being a hundred and seventy-five feet from the doors of the library. Uh, it's just going to tie somebody to go across that street because they don't wanna walk. Uh, those are my concerns.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, Betsy, did you still have your hand up?
Um, yeah, I re-raised it. Um, yeah, I do think, you know, I think we do need some additional, as I said, some additional analysis of sort of a, a wa, a longer. I, as I put in the chat, uh, or I made sort of re-clarified. Um, what happens if we could keep the through lane, just one lane all the way down? It's one lane over on the other side of State Street. We could just, you know, yes, it widens out for turning at um Chest, at Chestnut, Maple or Chestnut Dwight, but not, but keep, think about just sort of the um, just sort of to sort of send the message that now, as it's already been stated, that this is now more of a um residential downtown street that you're going on, not a um speedway. I think there's a lot, we need to get a lot more information about how the different lights will be timed so that the people don't see as they go through one light that they see that it's green at the next, which encourages them to speed up. Um, we do need an overall looking at what the pedestrian signalization timing is and whether full intersection uh stoppage versus concurrent um, signalization, which is the preferred um, uh, alternative in the pedestrian safety world. Uh, so there's a lot, there is definitely a lot more looking at some addition, you know, more detail that we need. And it does look that um, at least if people were still crossing at the driveways, they would get the tail end of the pedestrian refuge island. So at least if they're still crossing somewhat, not way up at your additional hump, they would get some protection. So I think we need to really look at that configuration a little bit more. And as Jesse said, can we just sort of inch it down a little bit closer to those driveways? Um, that's something I would um wanna, wanna look at. So I, I, yeah, I like the general concept and where the direction we're going in terms of responding to Catering's question. I think it's terrific. I'm, I also wanna pull is, you know, I don't know what the status of the additional relooking at making Chestnut two-way all the way to State Street. And um, should this plan at this point be taking into consideration that that two-way configuration to State Street should happen? So therefore, how does this bringing down to one lane actually work with that? Um, configuration? And uh, so I think there's, there's some bigger picture. Um, the, uh, and more additional analysis that really needs to be looked at. So enough of my running on.
Well, thank you, thank you for that. And I wanna make sure that I, I give everybody an opportunity to speak who has their, their hands up. And um, I believe Linda, uh, is your hand still up, or are you?
I did put my hand up. I'm not sure that uh Consular Letterman or Consular Duff didn't put their hands up first, so I will defer to them.
And, and before we defer, uh, Chris, it's my sense that, as Betsy just said, uh, we might wanna uh do more analysis. Is this design set in stone? Uh, can there be modification in this plan?
The, the location of where the crossing needs to be is set. What the widening is, how the lane arrangements are, timing, that still needs to be done.
Okay. Is there gonna be, uh, for example, Armory Commons? I mean, is there gonna be more presentation of this plan to the people that are actually gonna be affected by it? Where they live, or?
Oh, yeah, yeah, whenever, I, I would anticipate either through this, this committee or uh, whether it's presentations with uh Aqua or whatever. Uh, when we start getting more information, you know, uh, you know, harder information in uh, December and January, happy to present that. And especially from a timing standpoint, because I just don't want all of a sudden, one day, stuff is out there, because I think, especially when we're dealing with classical condominiums, uh, there's gonna be an issue related to that. And, you know, one of the other things that when you're coming down State Street and you cross this, you, uh, people need to take a left-hand turn into the parking lot. So, you know, one of the things we were talking about is, okay, if you wanna keep the lane arrangements, uh, do you eliminate that left turn? Do you eliminate a left turn out of the parking lot? Things like that, that, you know, when you really get into safety and you can stop that sort of thing uh, with signs, people will still do it, or you stop it with curbing. And so then I need to figure out is, is what sort of impact it has on classical people getting in and out of classical, people getting in and out of this parking lot, as well as being able to access uh, the side of the library. As was mentioned before, you know, there, there's, there's delivery trucks. Every once in a blue moon, there might be a, a tractor trailer, but they're mostly, you know, mid-sized delivery type trucks that are there. Uh, I happened to be out there a month ago and saw a tractor trailer trying to, trying to back in there, which was interesting. But, you know, when you're looking at that, now you got people turning in both directions. So that's why the location of it becomes a uh, you know, last thing I wanna do is all of a sudden, you can't get into the library parking lot from So, that's the sort of thing that we're gonna be looking at over the next couple of months.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna, I know, Elizabeth, uh, you've been making some suggestions. If you'd like to make some comments, and then we'll end up with Consular uh Davila and Consular Letterman, who's a member of the committee. I, I think we probably will have more meetings on this issue, because certainly for finally addressing this issue, we wanna make sure that it, it achieves what we're looking for and, and that is no more uh tragic deaths crossing that street. Uh, Elizabeth, did you have any final comments you'd like to make?
No, I'm all set. Thank you, Consular Walsh.
Uh, thank you for joining us and for your comments. So I will go to uh you, Victor, and then Jesse, who, a member of the committee, uh, will make the final remarks. So, Victor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Chris, thank you for your presentation, um.
Thank you for mentioning.
I look forward to the meeting. I, I think, uh, if I may, uh, Chris, I would like to encourage you, because I'm still concerned that this is not gonna happen till the spring, and we're still dealing with Christmas and the holiday season. Uh, I would encourage you, Chris, uh, to work with the police department, uh, to see if we can do as a temporary measure to hopefully prevent more deaths uh through the holiday season, to work, uh, to put um special traffic police details, uh, either in the downtown area uh, or, and or throughout the city, particularly in these hotspots. Because uh, uh, we all know historically, um, during the holiday season, that's when we have the most fatalities uh, in the city. So, uh, I will encourage you to, uh, work with the mayor and uh, uh, and the uh police commissioner, uh, to see if we can save more lives, uh, during this holiday season. Uh, thank you, Chris. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Consular Davila. Yeah. Uh, Consular Letterman?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Chris, can you please, um, this week send to the counselors the, whatever written product we had from the study, whatever the full results uh of the study are, can you share that with the city council?
Just hold on one second. Yeah, I have, I have the, I'm just, I just wanted to make sure, so there were two different things being looked at here. The uh, the stuff that I have now is a lot of data. Uh, so I can get that. One of the other things I, I neglected to mention, uh, which I agree with, and we've had a lot of problems with, has been lighting. Uh, so we've also, we've brought in EverSource, uh, as well, number one, to fix lights. And number two, uh, when we, when we do the proposal that we're gonna do here, uh, most likely, we're also gonna be doing some additional lighting. Uh, but the answer to your question, Counselor, is I can, I'm just looking at this here. Uh, whatever information I have, I'm happy to share it with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And uh, I think we will, we will meet again. I mean, I'm really happy that we've gotten to the point where people are no longer saying we can't do anything, and we're gonna do something. But I, I just hope that, you know, I'm disappointed it doesn't, I know people, including myself, that have probably uh crossed that street where they shouldn't. And I'm not quite sure if, if, if we're actually targeting that or hitting that bullseye. So, but thanks, everybody. Uh, I don't know if we'll meet again before Christmas, if not, uh, happy holidays to everybody. And, and thank you for following up on this issue. Appreciate it very much. And, uh, Chris, thanks for joining us today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Catering. Thank you.
Bye-bye.